Okay, so we are here at the Howard Johnson Building for a third meeting in regards to moving the... Or the third meeting in regards to zoning for a soccer stadium. And so, uh, we're here now. We're gonna go ahead and, um, check it out. Uh, shout out to my man Theo Morrison, huge government relations expert, um, diverse professional as well. And we've worked together on, um, possibly bringing, uh, Team USA Kickboxing, also known as Wacko USA, World Association Kickboxing, uh, Kick, World Association Kickboxing, Kickboxing Organization USA, United States of America, K-1 Kickboxing. Shout out to Kevin Walker, first of all. Huge mover and shaker, um, for, uh, in kickboxing MMA. Uh, I know he has a, um, brand, Grapple and Strike. Uh, and please forgive me KW if I'm mispronouncing that. Much respect to you in so many ways. Um, and he also runs Bonafide, which is a nonprofit organization as well on the kickboxing side. Doing a lot of great work, and he's about, uh, health and wellness and using martial arts as a way to, um, connect the kids, to free their mind, to expand their mentality, to empower them. But in doing that, he's also works with, he's also, uh, a representative of Team USA Kickboxing, oversees the promotion and does, and dabbles in the coaching as well for Team USA. And has some really strong fighters to include, uh, Omari Boyd, who is right now, um, America's, uh, leading K-1 kickboxer. He just won, he came in third place, um, in the World Games. Uh, the first time, uh, Wacko USA, which is Team USA Kickboxing, was allowed in the World Games. It just came back, um, I wanna say Peru, but that's, that's not where it came from. I think I could be wrong, but Peru, um, and, uh, went down there and was, is the only, uh, Team U, is only Team USA kickboxer to ever place, came in third place, the highest ranking at this point. He just got started, connected with Coach Walker at Tennessee State University, where Omari Boyd was a student of and earned his master's degree. And Kevin Walker was doing interim coaching down there. And so, they hooked up at TSU, representing North Nashville, uh, have a, um, a gym down there. And they've been going all over the world kicking butt, uh, literally beating, um, actual professional, uh, kickboxers. As Omari, as of now, is classified as an amateur. And they've been going down, so they came down. Uh, shout out to Rob Zabisky, uh, Zabisky, President of Wacko USA. Uh, Mr. Zabisky had the honor of gracing us with his presence, brought Team USA down to Nashville, based from Chicago, Illinois area, brought them down to Nashville, invited Team USA Kickboxing to Nashville, where the two, uh, teams, uh, Team USA, Team Na, uh, Canada, uh, competed at Tennessee State University. It was a great affair. The opening of, uh, competitions, matches were with amateur fighters. And then, um, Team USA and Team Canada went head to head. And, uh, it was a beautiful thing. And like I said, that shout out to Theo Morrison, uh, who is working with me as best we can to do everything we can in conjunction with Rob Zabisky to bring Team USA, uh, Kickboxing, have their headquarters here in Nashville, particularly in North Nashville, as well as, um, bringing the, um, Team USA K-1 Kickboxing, uh, trials, Olympic trials, uh, or World Game trials to Nashville. So like, if you wanna trial for the team, you would come to Nashville. And those are the things that I'm bringing to the table and more importantly, wanna bring to North Nashville. Because Nashville's doing a lot of great things. You're only as strong as your weakest link. And I'd say North Nashville is not weak at all, but we wanna bring more economic growth. And I get a lot of times individuals that say, "Oh, as the growth comes, we're getting pushed out. We're getting priced out." That's where North Nashvillians, to include myself, have to expand our mind and become more property minded and start investing in the community, start investing in property, start investing in commercial residential property, uh, and also, um, creating buy-ins and, um, just different, uh, strategies to have skin in the game in both real estate and with the corporations. Shout out to Corey Jenkins. Uh, he's a community development expert. I mean, he's, uh, superb in that area. Shout out to CJ, you're doing your thing, man. Congratulations to you and your beautiful family. And shout out to Corey Jenkins Jr. doing his thing down at Belmont. And, uh, this is all North Nashville. So I'm putting on my shirt here. Um, I try to be transparent as possible. Uh, put my shirt on. And, uh, I believe so, go downstairs on the right-hand side. And so, um, you know, I try my best to be transparent as possible. Hold on. Sorry, I lost you there. I try my best to be transparent as possible and just a disclosure again. Donovan, why do you keep, I got the shirt on, why are you focusing on bringing, uh, major league soccer stadium to the, to the fair, I mean, to Metro Center? You must got something going on. It's not about going on. It's about me moving here homeless 10 years ago. And now, I'm in the position where, um, the public and private sector decision makers and movers and shakers are contacting me to, uh, bring advising and, um, conversations and engagement and development opportunities to North Nashville. Because that's the game that I wanna play and wanna continue to play. And so, there is some self-interest for me because when people say, "Well Donovan, you're the leading, uh, recruit, you're the leading corporate ambassador for, uh, recruiting retention and community relations in Nashville, uh, what have you done?" Okay, well, I can say, "Well, I've been working with Team USA Kickboxing and brought them down, or assisted in bringing them down, uh, getting official welcome from, uh, former Mayor Barry, um, and the, um, Music City Visitors Corporation and all kinds of other stuff." Uh, getting them interviews and all this on the media. And now, here I am connecting with, um, connecting with, uh, the soccer situation. And again, our city, uh, our city, our town, our, our soccer, our town, with all due respect to Team US, uh, to, um, Nashville Soccer Club. And I pray and I look forward to them doing an outstanding job this season. And ultimately, um, if they continue, they stayed the fairgrounds, that's great. But if it doesn't work out for any reason, we wanna make sure that, um, the conversation is brought to Metro Center. And that's where we as, uh, individuals have to be open to that conversation. Excuse me, ma'am. Ma'am? The meeting's downstairs. It's downstairs on the right-hand side. I was trying to catch your attention, but good luck enough.
Do you have a sticker and magnet?
Cool, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Here's a sticker and the magnet, do you have a magnet?
And it's always inspiring to see young professionals, movers and shakers. Thank you so much. Our city, our club, I believe is what it is. If you guys don't know, that's the motto. Uh, thank you so much. All right, you're welcome. So we're gonna go ahead and get in here now, um, and represent. Let's do it. I am a man of integrity, so I will not get you on camera if you choose not to. Get information from these all?
Do you have agendas and are you wishing to speak on an item?
Depends on what the IM is.
Which item are you here for?
Major League Soccer.
Uh, if you wanna speak, there are a lot of people, but we have forms there.
Sure, right now. Okay. So I'm gonna go ahead and give my two cents, as we, uh, respect the Nashville Soccer Club, our city, our club. I'm gonna go ahead and put down an opportunity to speak. So give me a second. We're gonna go ahead and fill out the, um, we're gonna go ahead and fill out the request form. I'm actually didn't press before, so I'm not gonna do it. All right, we're going in.
Okay, who's first?
It's the first, I think, okay.
Excuse me.
Do you have a, a letter?
I have several.
Excuse me.
They also sent white letters. Then they sent postcards to arrest them.
Give them.
All right, we're going in.
Go, love you. Please be to fill out a form.
Excuse me. I think I may have accidentally elbowed you. Sorry about that.
This is policy, regulations for the governance of the fairgrounds. The Fair Board approved the fairgrounds improvement plan on June 12th. And that graphic, the approved plan is on your slide. The plan outlines the location of existing and intended uses, including the location of the 10 acres of mixed-use development subject to this application, which is outlined clearly.
Right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The decision before you is whether to recommend rezoning of the 10 acres that is the subject of the application today. The other decision, that is a related decision that is before you, is whether you will amend the general plan and amend, uh, to amend the community plan, which is part of the general plan, to allow for this rezoning. There are a lot of moving parts to this particular, um, project. The, the, the Metro Fair Board, which you've heard about, has a part to play. The Sports Authority has a part to play. The Planning Commission has a part to play. And the Metro Council ultimately has a part to play. And each one of those entities has a, a different part, and they have a different review process for their piece of the puzzle that makes up this entire project. The only thing, however, and you may hear a lot of comments about those things, uh, tonight. But the only thing that this board is charged with tonight is determining whether or not to recommend a rezoning for the 10 acres that is the subject of the application and whether or not to adopt the associated plan amendment. The associated plan amendment will require six votes in order to be, uh, passed this evening by this commission. The, um, SP rezoning request will require five votes. The basis, as outlined in your rule, Section 7 H, of your rezoning, of any rezoning, is, uh, whether or not it is consistent with the overall intent and goals of the general plan. So those are the things to keep in mind.
Thanks, there you go. So now, uh, we are on to anyone in your audience. So you, the applicant will have a 35 seconds, uh, for rebuttal. And now, we are on to anyone wishing to speak in support. If y'all would come on up, line up, and it's a reminder that you have, uh, two minutes. And please state your name and address. So come on up. Y'all would line up, you know, if you could. So I know that everybody wants to talk about why soccer is good, why soccer is better. Here, here, really, as the attorney says, consider community plans as a producer and rezone. So come on up. We are on to anyone wishing to speak in opposition. If y'all will line up.
All right, here we go.
... Over 3,000 signatures, current, this doggo has two toy markets and one ring. Utilizers of the fairgrounds that are opposed to this proposed fairgrounds. Let's go back to 2009, when Mayor Carl Dean announced that he was going to shut down the fairgrounds to redevelop it.
Okay, so I'm up next. Wish me luck. Okay, here we go. All right. Um, Chairman, uh, Councilman, and staff, a huge shout out. And I'm, first of all, the camera's not pointing to you, out of integrity, it's coming to me, there's a reason why. A huge shout out, I know you guys have your hands full, and so you guys are my prayers, uh, that there's a win-win deal on this and that there can be an educated decision. Um, and shout out to Councilman Kobe Sledge as well. I understand he has his hands full as well. If I, if I pronounced the councilman's name right. Uh, my name is Donovan Hilton, in North Nashville. And I'm holding this camera because I am self-employed alongside my wife. Hilton Lead Marketing Agency, www.e1connect.com. We're more than, more than just marketing. Shout out to Jamie Levitt at WS&amp;V as well. He, great account executive. Um, but I'm bringing this up because I came to Nashville homeless 10 years ago with my girlfriend, who's now my wife of seven years. And, uh, we've been able to carve out a self-sustaining business, self-sustaining life, three beautiful boys born here under one minute. Um, and some of our largest clients is express employment professionals, ironically, in Metro Center. Uh, and they provide, uh, skilled industrial jobs to the local residents of North Nashville. Because of that, I've been able to get a better understanding of the community and the people's will to wanna do better. And it's my job to help those residents become more self-sustaining minded. I also work with MDHA, with, uh, with their soft skill training. I provide, uh, soft skill training for the survey proctors, for Edge Hill, to be able to pass out their surveys to the local residents as they're making those transitions for envisioned, um, Edge Hill. As I have less than 20 seconds, I just, as I hear the pros and cons. Food for thought. If things don't work out, if, and I'm hoping they do, but if they don't, let's think about Metro Center. I don't know if it's a good fit or not, but I know North Nashville's open to the idea. Um, and, um, God bless you all. Thank you so much. Talk to you soon.
Hey, I'm Clint Conover from the Tennessee Tribune. You should subscribe.
In the past two weeks, a lot happened to our, um, our neighborhood has suffered tremendously from gentrification, as you know. Um, and there has been continuous attempts to take over land in District 16. All are familiar with all of the fights that our neighbors have faced within the last year. We don't need a soccer stadium. We need elected officials. We need our elected officials, our businesses, and our nonprofit organizations to care about the people who live in the district more than they care about the profit they will make for themselves.
Thank you, commissioners. I spoke for your continued service and for your, um, attention tonight. As everyone's spoken, I want to thank everybody that has attended and spoke, regardless of position or content. I think that's important that we have this discussion on what is obviously a very important piece of property. I wanna speak a little bit to the title that's been given as part of the land use policy right now. It's called District Impact. District Impact is maybe the perfect definition for what the fairgrounds has been in the series. It has a positive impact on the district. And you see people who are walking from, you know, all parts around the area, it's come to the flea market event, it's come to the Expo Center. Uh, you see great things happening when, uh, people are enjoying and selling, making, quite frankly, perhaps the revenue that they depend on, um, and at this property and that they wanna see continue. There have been negative impacts from this property to the district. Those are things that were hashed out ad nauseam, almost, of seven years ago in a discussion that probably all of us were in some way, shape, or form, part of if we're here. And I don't wanna go over those. What I do wanna say is that I think that what you're considering today, the community plan amendment and the rezoning of these 10 acres, has the potential to have a very positive district impact on the district around the fairgrounds and quite frankly, I think through all the counties.
That's a proper motion with conditions. And so, it's, it's, uh, with all of the conditions. So that's a proper motion. Is there a second? There's a second. Any discussion? Seeing no other discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, no. Ayes have it, 6-0. We are going to take a quick break.
Okay, so, uh, we just finished, uh, the meeting, at least for the, and really, what was going on today was the rezoning of 10 acres. Um, we tried to throw in the soccer stadium conversation, but it was really about 10 acres of zoning right next to the soccer stadium, which was passed. And now, that, um, zoning, that zoning being passed will go to, uh, Metro Council. And so, they have the different dates going on there. I'll try to post the dates on there for the, uh, Metro Council meetings. Uh, first one's starting August 3rd. And, uh, only North Nashville in here again, uh, no big deal. But, uh, ultimately, like I said, my objective is to discuss bringing, uh, economic growth to North Nashville. And it almost saddens me because, one, I felt bad because a lot of the community residents here for that district were advocating to bring that, uh, this project and rezoning of mixed use to their area, to their neighborhood, because like they were saying, it brings unity, it brings affordable housing, it brings, um, sidewalks, it brings all the jobs. Um, but at the same time, it kinda saddens me because it's like, well, and nothing against that. That's great, um, and we're all for it, you know, um, but, you know, why and how will, when will North Nashville ever be considered, you know, for economic growth? This was a prime opportunity. Um, I don't know if the, if the opportunity or the conversation was considered at all about actually having the stadium at Metro Center, at all, you know? And, um, so, you know, those things that the residents fought for today in this district and they won, uh, congratulations to them on that. You know, those are the same things that North Nashvillians won as well. And there really isn't no public and private investment in that area. Um, and as I'm here, learning the process, um, it gets, it makes me sharper, it makes me better, and it gives me more of a hunger and thirst to make sure I stay engaged. Uh, of course, shout out to the Nashville Soccer Club, um, and what they're doing. Our town, our club, and we wish you all the best in the season. But at the same time, the conversation has to become at some point, when and where does North Nashville, um, fit into this? You know, Bordeaux area fit into this, uh, to be able to spur some economic growth in that area. And, uh, this North Nashville shirt was just one way to get that conversation going. And so, uh, again, shout out to all of the, um, staff on the planning zone there, uh, council members. They did an excellent job. Peace and blessings to them all, because up to the day, we're still all one city and we have to be able to work together. So, you never wanna talk bad about anybody. So sorry, excuse me, sir, so sorry. And, um, catch a little bit of that background there. Pretty cool. Had a chance to go up and speak, say my piece. Um, say my piece. And, uh, it's always good to see a young professional doing your thing. And it's, it's all my, it's facing me too as well. Yeah, yeah, just give your heads up. Um, so, you know, it goes like that sometimes. And, uh, really great meeting. Have a good rest of the day, sir. And, uh, thank you, sir, appreciate it. Excellent job, young professionals, very excited. You're welcome. Are you all, uh, college students or just young professionals, if you don't mind me asking? Thank you. Nice, awesome. All the best to your careers as well. Thank you for the shirts, appreciate it. Let's have a good rest of the day. Thanks. And so, uh, more importantly, like I said, North Nashvillians, especially young folks, 1835. Uh, I know we're working hard. I'm very fortunate to be able to be self-employed. And again, I don't know how long that's gonna be, you know, uh, my just working on, one, uh, focusing on penetrating, first of all, getting market acceptance about my work and my work. Um, I didn't get, two minutes is a lot. I mean, two minutes is not a long time. I thought it would be like, I had a whole, for the record, I had like a whole spill that I was gonna say, but then when I got, got there, you know, by the time I finished introducing myself, I only had like 50 seconds left. And so, I tried to squeeze as much as I could in, but, um, where was I going with that? Um, yeah, so, very fortunate again. You want to, uh, so sorry about that. Uh, just the decision.
They just, they just, uh, they're horrible.
It's tough.
I thought about something else. I ended up hiring a lawyer.
Wow.
The planning, the planning staff is terrible.
It's tough on there. Uh, and, you know, you know, it's, it's deep because, you know, I try to make sure constituents understand, you know, right, wrong, we're indifferent. If you're trying to change your community and change your life, you can't rely on anyone other than yourself, public or private sector. Can't rely on them. And so, you know, how do you keep control of your community? Um, you know, you gotta purchase property, you know, commercial and residential. Now, obvious, it's obvious fact that, you know, um, was it the Fair Housing Commission and all those things? You know, they did have lopsided, um, approval plans and lending for, uh, minorities. So I mean, that's kinda against you, but you know, I pray that they're working hard on continuing to change that. So now that, you know, minorities are, I even hate using that word, minorities. But now that diverse communities, uh, you know, now have access to somewhat of lending, you know, it's important for individuals to purchase land. There was an article that came out that, um, Ashford Hughes, who is the Director of, um, Workforce Development Diversity and Inclusion for the Mayor's Office, posted a great article, uh, that stated, you know, how homeownership directly impacts the community because through homeownership, you're able to take financing out of your home to start a business. And I know individuals personally that were able to start successful businesses to this day because they were able to use their home as an investment. And so, if you, you know, in your community don't own homes, and I'm, I'm, I'm really not an advocate of owner homes a lot of times, because that's a huge note you have to pay, you know, for economics that aren't guaranteed. You know, but, um, nonetheless, you know, homes are a way to create the financing that you need, especially for diverse communities, uh, especially for diverse communities that need to get the financing to, um, start and maintain their businesses. A lot of diverse communities, and this is not anyone's fault, but the diverse communities, to include myself, aren't aware or educated enough on how to find capital, how to actually, um, apply for capital, uh, working capital, how to actually, you know, what is a statement capabilities? You know, uh, a capability statement, you know, or statement of capabilities. You know, um, you know, how do you become certified to do, uh, business with the private sector? How do you become certified to do business with the public sector? These are things that are not really taught like that, and it's no one's fault because now it's the information age, we should be able to go online. There are a lot of great, um, agencies out there to include the minority, um, business office. I mean, that agency was designed for minorities. And, uh, Pathway Lending does a great job. Uh, Tennessee, the University of Tennessee, um, they do a great job with certification. They have a, uh, division here in Nashville. They do a great job as far as helping people get certified. Uh, so there's a lot of resources out there, so you can't really complain. But at the same time, you know, we have to, uh, diverse individuals have to stop thinking that there's individuals or, or bodies out there designed to help you, because they are, but you can't depend on them, you know, um, I say that out of love and respect. We have to do our own thing. First, starting with improving our literacy rate. You know, how do you, how are you in a diverse community and we, uh, by third grade, we're not reading at third grade level, you know? Uh, if you can't, if you can't improve your literacy rate, then how are you gonna improve your financial literacy rate? Because if you can't read, you don't definitely can't read bank statements, you know? So those are the things that we have to focus on as diverse residents and diverse communities to be able to be a complement, um, overall to ourselves, you know? So we gotta first get into the school system and get to class, you know? Um, you know, we can't be in diverse communities and have so many failing schools, you know? And there's a lot of moving parts that go into that. I'm a very system-thinking oriented individual, so you can't blame just one thing. You know, it's hard to say it's up to, it's the parents' fault when the parents, you know, are working one or two or more jobs and, you know, um, you know, but again, you know, are those jobs that you're working bringing enough income, you know, for you to create a sustainable living wage? And if it's not, what are you doing at this point while you can? You can't say, "Well Donovan," because then you say, "Well Donovan, you know, I wanna do it, but you know, my job is third shift. I can't catch the bus." First of all, I don't catch the bus, but there's a bus route, there's no bus route that even comes to my area to be able to keep my job. Uh, you know, there's a lot of moving parts, you know? And all we can do right now is pray, uh, give thanks, you know, for us to be aware of these things as well as start to meditate on how we can come up with solutions. And, uh, the first true solution is I, and I hope when you're pointing to yourself as well, I have to be accountable for my life. I have to be accountable for my family and the children that I bring into this earth. Meaning, I'm gonna have to first lead by example and make sure that I have my work skills up. I'm literate enough and, um, trying to get employment. Now, you can agree with a capitalism or not, but right now, capitalism, society states you have to work, you know, uh, to, to make, to make money. Now, I'm not saying work physically, because you can create passive income. You can create portfolio income. But at some point, you have to start with earned income. You're not bringing in earned income, then, you know, you're not able to use that earned income money to work for you. And that goes back to the Robert Kiyosaki thing, you know, so, about the SBI E or S or the E-S-B-I quadrants, you know? So we have to become, you know, literate even in business and commerce and capitalism and corporate law. You know, you gotta be open, you gotta be, you have to open your mind 'cause you see individuals in here working hard on both sides. So I can't even be upset with anybody because, you know, just as much as I was like, "Oh, move the stadium to the, to the, or the soccer stadium to the, to the, um, to the Metro Center", there were a lot of individual residents, you know, good residents in that side of town that, you know, also wanted the same thing. They want a place where they can grow a strong neighborhood, you know? And so, it's like, if I'm sitting there and say, "Move it over there", you know, I'm taking away from my family on the other side of town, you know? And at the same time, you have Hummers going on at the state fairgrounds. It's been going on for years, a family tradition, one of the few family traditions left in Nashville. I believe at one point, they were trying to tear down the, um, the, um, shoot. At one point, they were trying to tear up, tear down the, um, you know, I'm talking about, the old soccer, the old baseball stadium. And it was, um, and they found out, you know, that there were African grave sites, the African-American grave sites there from back from the Civil War. You know, Fort Nagley, Fort Nagley, back from the Civil War. African-Americans fought in the Civil War at Fort Nagley. Um, and when the war was over, had nowhere to go and actually created the first community of African-Americans in Edge Hill. And that's where African-Americans, from my understanding, actually first started. But they were trying to redevelop Fort Nagley and in that regard, um, uh, you know, found out, "Hey, there's African, African-American grave sites here from the, um, war", you know, because this was where the African-Americans were, 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 you know, um, uh, settled once after the war. And, you know, here we are as developers, and that's about commerce. I'm not taking away from that, you know, but developers are saying, "Hey, we wanna make some money", in so many words. And the people had to fight, you know, to preserve Fort Nagley, you know? Uh, and the history that Fort Nagley provided. And just like they're fighting to preserve the fairgrounds and the history the fairgrounds provided. the history the fairgrounds provided, because a lot of great developments happened in Nashville, Nashville's moving and shaking, but Nashville's moving and shaking, but, you know, at the same time, you want to preserve some things, because that's the problem, and that's the challenge with, you know, slavery, if you will, a lot of times, you know, when wars happen, you get history, but you usually get history, or some people say his story, you get his story or history usually from the side that conquered the other side, and the side that conquered the other side is going to change things up to make it look good, based upon the view of the conquered side, you know, and what happens is, the side that was conquered has to adapt to the new system, and in that, they lose their culture, they lose their history, and when you lose your history, you know, it's hard for you to know where you're going, because you've forgotten where you come from, and a lot of times, where we come from are the traditional values that are what made certain situations great, because with progression, which is a great thing, a lot of times, we forget the roots, the foundation, the principles, and that's what I'm hoping we don't do here, but at any rate, you know, that's what happened, it was a, it was a tough, it was a tough meeting either way it goes, somebody was going to, you know, not get the best, the best end of the deal, and I just hate to see, you know, anyone in Nashville not get the best end of the deal, because Nashville's such a great city, I pray and I hope and I, I, I cover as integral as I can, the elected officials and all those that are working hard in Nashville to keep this municipality going, great city, but, you know, one way that you can make sure that your municipality, to include Nashville, is rolling and rocking and rolling, is for you as best you can to get up and do what you're supposed to do, starting with education, starting with taking care of yourself and your family, to bring up kids, so if kids is coming to school arguing and cussing out the teacher, fighting, and all these different things, as parents, you shouldn't say, well, no, my kid is in your hands from eight to three, you know, I don't want to hear it, because what that does is it creates a system of challenges, not only for the child at that time, but also for the future of the community, and so, we can do better, and we are doing better, because first, we have to put our minds on it, and so those are just things that I took with us, took with you, with me, I don't know if you see the signs back there, speaking of community development and community growth, you know, you've seen the signs back there, tomorrow is Election Day, in regards to the primary election for your state elected officials, and I believe the confirmation of some of those metro officials that won certain seats in the clerk's office and things like that, so it's a big time in Nashville, came down here, I know I stuck out like a sore thumb, keep me in your prayers for grace, I'm not here trying to talk bad about anybody, I'm not here trying to take over anything, I'm here for myself to be engaged and to learn. That's a sharp bowtie as well, I meant to tell you that, sir. That was a sharp bowtie as well. I meant to tell you that, and I'm, the camera's on me, I'm taking here Donovan Hilton.
A little vlogging there, a little snapchit or something.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, like several months self-sustaining business. So it was just a, it's just a way to stimulate conversation, that all, that's all it is, no more, no less, in a way to get people to saying, no, don't move it there, or maybe we should move it there, that's all it was, you know, and that's it. Keep me in your prayers, sir, have a good rest of the day. And so, yeah, so and again, I'm, 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 I personally am networking, shaking hands, meeting, you know, again, you know, this is a ownership company here, a holding company, they're investing in the company, I will say, dang it, I hope I brought my papers, I will say, I'm learning some terminologies, with all due respect, some of those terminologies, with all due respect, is called corporate welfare, corporate welfare, that's what I'm hearing a lot about as I'm doing my research, I'm also hearing a lot about, and I don't want to take too much of your time, I'm just giving you my thoughts, and I pray, you know, you guys are probably like, Donovan, shut up, what are you talking about, but if you don't like the information, you can just press, you can turn it off, it's not for everyone, and I don't mean to bore you guys with information, I'm just looking to stretch the mind, industrial warehouse distribution, I'm, I'm, I'm recognizing a lot of rezoning to other rezonings, if you will, and there, so Nashville I saw at one point, and I continue to see, was based like most and all municipalities, countries, that's why a lot of third world countries are becoming second world countries, and moving up, because we have to understand that the manufacturing industry is the backbone of all of your commerce, commercial society, you know, the industrial industry, and why, because it provides jobs for a large massive individuals, and it allows them to have skilled trades, not only for an employer, but for themselves, and when you take away manufacturing jobs, you actually take away the tax base for your area, because now you're going into the service sector, and that's not guaranteed, and so what happens is, the manufacturing base goes to another side of town, because it's cheaper labor, and that cheap labor, even though it's cheaper, is actually putting dollars into the pockets of those residents, and those individuals that live there, and they take those dollars, and they're able to bill something from that, even though it's a lot less than what another country or city may be receiving, they're able to still bill from that, and they're appreciative of that, so I'm not taking away from that, but at the same time, we have to understand, and I understand it's cheaper because you have environmental protection, regulations you don't have to deal with over there, or I understand it's cheaper labor, less corporate taxes you have to pay, if any, but at the same time, when we take those things away from your tax base, then you actually do more harm, I feel, to your community as we get into the glitzy glamour, and then all of a sudden, not only do, so you think about a lot of your, with all due respect, think about a lot of your rural cities, your African American cities as well, back in the fifties and sixties, where individuals were able to work at a manufacturing plant straight out of high school for thirty, forty years, and actually have a sustainable living wage, a lot of those communities weren't, you know, as challenging as they are today, but when you take away those jobs out of these big warehouses that we see here behind us, where individuals are able to work with their skilled trades with their hands, especially men, then you actually leave community residents stagnant, walking around, applying for these service jobs, and there are not as many service jobs out there as the manufacturing, because manufacturing's a warehousing, if you will, and I hate to say it like that, because you're saying, well, you're just putting people in a hot box and they're working, I'm not saying that's right, wrong, or different, but at the same time, it provides a strong tax base for individuals to make sustainable living, to buy retail, to buy services, when you take away the manufacturing, it makes it more challenging, and so I'm seeing a lot of these rezonings and taking away these IWDs, which is the industrial warehouse distribution zones, taking them away and removing them, and using them to mix, mixed housing and mixed use income and all that, I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but at the same time, we can't, you know, you're, you're taking away your nugget, and you're giving it, you're taking away your gold, and you're giving it to someone else, and I'm not saying that particularly for Nashville, I'm just talking about in general, so anyone who's looking to go into community development, economic development, economic growth, keep that in mind, and so I'm like, man, you know, let's keep the industrial jobs if we can, if not, we need to find a place in Nashville, or any municipality needs to find a place where they can put a bunch of industrial parks and allow people to work there, but to think that you're going to have mixed income, service positions, it becomes a lot more competitive for the local residents, it forces people out, not only because the jobs are scarce, and the supply is low and the demand is high, it just, you know, it forces people to move out, and then it's funny, because what you invested in to grow indirectly at some point goes down, because, you know, you're losing your tax base, and then all of a sudden, you go into cities that are bankrupt, and I'm not going to name any cities, but you know the cities, and shoot, shoot, I think the country's bankrupt almost, because a lot of our manufacturing bases is leaving, you know, I'm not talking bad or anything, and a lot of countries are taking advantage of the opportunity, so it's all good, but it's also a conversation, you know, when it comes to how do we find a win-win deal, can we find a win-win deal? I don't know. Donovan Hilton, I'm not going to take too much of your time, we just, we're leaving the Metropolitan Planning and Commission meeting, shout-out to the Metro Planning, like I said, I pray grace over you, you're human beings just like me, and, you know, we have to be able to work together and move forward, so I pray for your graces, I hope you pray for me, and like I said, I'm just trying, I'm just opening your mind to different perspectives, and challenging, especially eighteen thirty-five year olds, especially in North Nashville, don't complain, you know, best thing you could do is have a presence, come to these meetings if you can, if not, I pray I could do all I can to get the information to you, as long as the higher powers allow, and if not, again, you know, my business is all about recruiting and retaining customers and employees, as well as providing community relations services for employers, workforce development organizations, business chambers, and I pray soon, nonprofit organizations and government agencies, so Hilton Elite Marketing Agency is what my business is, and as a CEO, it's my job to develop the business, which means find more customers, big contracts, I got a lot, I have a lot of small contracts, but I need big contracts, because that's going to allow me to provide jobs, not only for myself, but for skilled candidates that are looking for employment, to include, you know, individuals coming out of college, paying all this money, tuition continues to go up, and they can't find a job, so, you know, then you wonder why you have so many millennials out here blogging and, and driving Uber and saying, you know what, forget the system in regards to the traditional way, I got to get out here and get mine, the way I know how, but what that does is the millennials are a little more, they're stronger mentally than those of the past, because they know that it's not guaranteed that once you get out of college, you have a job, so they're already, fresh out of, I mean, you could, you should go online right now, look at how many millionaires there are at like thirteen, they're like, I'm not, you know, go to school for what? Go to school for what, you know, other than the basics, you know, I'm not saying that's right or wrong, but we have to, if you're a leader, you know, if you're not a, not a leader, if you're leading, you have to make sure that you are aware of your climate of what's going on, so that, you know, it's a win-win deal for everyone. Donovan Hilton, CEO of Hilton Elite Marketing Agency, remember, we're more than just marketing.